...1975, titled the Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. The proper notice of the special meeting was provided in the notice of March 23rd, 2010. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun, Star Ledger, North Jersey Herald and News, and the Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, posted on the home site. This is an official meeting. These are our signatures. Thanks, Mr. Flicks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and used for, with liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Francholli?
Here.
Mr. Kutschda?
Mr. Moskertola?
Mr. Riley?
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Souter?
Here.
Mr. Spazano?
Dr. Cassell?
Here.
Okay, purpose of the meeting tonight is to have any further questions and discussions on the budget. In light of the fact that these numbers often get thrown at us at the 11th hour when we have to move a tentative budget, I wanted to make sure every member and of course the public would be able to see that we would have every opportunity to ask any questions, call for any clarification, or call for any opinion on where we should go and what we should do so we're thoroughly prepared to take action on Wednesday. So, having said that, any other questions or answers or suggestions or comments?
Have we done any more cuts?
Working on it, the last two or three days, just what I've been doing is looking at the non-tenured list, the data pile, the tenured list, although I don't believe that will affect any tenured teachers, the data pile, certifications, somebody as you know may be in one job now but they started out in another job. So, that's very tedious, but as far as cuts, we have cast our number. We could be tweaking it around a bit, but nothing out of the ordinary, nothing that I can say. We found something else.
Apparently, you know, we have to look at what we have now and hopefully we might be able to find more cuts. I mean, there's two objectives here. One is to make sure that the education of our children is not affected. I think to some degree we've achieved that goal. The other one, I think we at least should do our best to save jobs. It's something that I know all of us are concerned about, but we were looking forward. I would hope that the Board immediately after this fiasco that has been brought upon us by the state government, that we begin to seriously look at consolidating services with the township, working with the township to, with shared services. We have to do this. Some time ago, I had mentioned this about a year ago, right after I got put on this Board, and it seems like, and I'm not talking about us, I'm just talking about in generalities, whether it be the town commissioners or us, or even other Boards of Education and government entities throughout the state, we talk about these things, and it seems to me that we've got to now take some action. So, I would hope that a lesson learned at this is that we begin preparation for next year very, very soon, because, Mr. Zara, as you and I have talked about, we're dealing with this year, but we don't know what's coming next year.
Particularly if the cap next year is 2.5 percent. As I think it's going to be for the municipality as well as for school boards across the state.
I'm a little confused tonight. I thought that we were going to gather here and go through a line item budget so we can have implementation to maybe try to find something with all of us working together. I don't see why we couldn't do that. We have the documents, I don't see why we couldn't. That's what I was under the impression that to meet is to go down verbative, each item, can we use this, can we sacrifice 10,000 out of this account, can we do this, so on and so forth. That's why I thought we were meeting. Yeah, but we can certainly do that and question any items that are on there or for suggestions, but I think that if we're going to get into specific positions, we're going to need to go into closed session. I'm not talking about positions, I'm talking about buses, transportation, where can we save money in transportation? Let's take a look at how we use our buses, what we spend on our field trips, what we spend on our athletics, what we spend on the bringing the students from district to district for the special ed needs. That's what I thought that we were going to do, we certainly do that. The purpose of the meetings is to bring out any question or concern or review that anyone has, so we could add a problem to that.
Well, yeah, but I got a problem because isn't, aren't the people that run the operation here supposed to know better which things are absolutely necessary and which things aren't? I mean, how are we going to make the decision that they shouldn't get one extra basketball this year? Maybe you could because you're the athletic director, but I don't know in general how we can make these kinds of decisions as an addendum to what these people have already made. You understand? I mean, how am I going to decide which line item, what to cut, as I don't know the necessity, but if I decide stuff, I would, that would be it.
If I may, I think we should go over a bit of the budget process, just to start from the beginning. And please help me out, Mrs. Jamins on this, and Mrs. Franciosi. But when we look at the operating budget, Mrs. Jamins goes over, and I think you have a great idea, and this is setting this up, Mrs. Jamins goes through every line item of the budget, and she actually looks now, we're approaching April, what is left in those line items? And then if there has been too much money budgeted in those line items from, say, last year to this year, she automatically has reduced those going forward to next year. Am I correct in that?
Yes, you are.
So, what she's looking at, she's taking a very large view, and she's saying, she's looking at dollar amounts in each line item, and if we have three months of school left and we have more than enough money to cover the rest of it, she has reduced those line items by that amount or close to. As far as staffing needs, we build with the principals, as you remember, heading up the athletic department. We're looking at the supply requests from all the principals, and from the athletic director, and from the music and band department, and then we put that all in, and then we look at maintenance supplies, we look at buildings and grounds, we look at all of those things. But my focus is always the teacher in the classroom. How many teachers do we have this year? There's going to be no appreciable difference in population adding or taking away right now, so we have to keep those class sizes at a very decent number. And the report I gave on Monday was that we were going to keep the elementary, the number of elementary teachers at the same level. Maybe there's a different population in one grade where we have three sixth grades, maybe we would go down to two, two to three, but that would all balance out. The areas that we were looking at with increased class size was the high school and middle school because we certainly could then, English one, Spanish one, US history one, make the class sizes a bit bigger. And at the middle school, class sizes have been very good, very good, and Mrs. Franciosi and Mr. Flickio worked very hard when this was a school we need to reduce those classes and bring additional teachers into play to make class size smaller, and it's worked. Certainly that plan has worked, it's paid dividends, the scores are up. You mentioned transportation, we have to buy or lease another bus by law, perhaps we can look at, can we live without that bus? Can we look at our field trips and perhaps cut down on that? I've looked at professional development account, what's left in the professional development account? With three months remaining, we've reduced staff. I think what we're really looking at is personality and the elimination, as I brought to the Board, of certain positions, and I can't mention names, because that's the only way to get where we were supposed to be. What was the total amount we had cut?
3.1 million.
3.1 million dollars. And we had a wonderful budget built, a wonderful budget built until we received the state aid reduction figures, and that compelled us to go back and look at, what, another $700,000? So, where we thought that we were very reasonable and physically responsible, and we thought that we still had a viable educational program in all the areas, special education, gifted and talented, student support services, guidance, athletics, music, extracurricular activities, within a 24-hour period, we had to reduce that by another 700,000. So, I certainly welcome everybody pitching in and looking at this. I don't know what information we can supply, but I'm certainly willing and able to answer any questions that maybe could look at this. Mrs. Jamins has worked very hard at this, maybe she could point out to some areas that maybe bear further investigation. Can you think of anything?
The only non-instructional areas we really have to look at are things like the money that the Board supports the field trips with. We've shaved every supply line, including a major cut of $100,000 in teaching supplies throughout the district, and then went through every single supply line for every department and shaved money. We have shaved money from miscellaneous expenses, we've reduced textbooks expenditures. There isn't much left in this budget that is not going to affect the classroom.
Well, I'd like to just say a couple of things. Number one, in looking at the handout that I received last week with the elimination of the staff, that's my main focus. I'm not looking, I'm looking to keeps there, and basically by looking at these other areas, I was just riding today and I was thinking about our athletics. Why do we have to go to High Point to play a game 56 miles away, round trip 112 miles, when we could stand right in our backyard and save that gas and bus and everything else? I mean, these are the little things, that's over $300 expense, not including the gas. So, I mean, little things like this, I thought can be brought into the focus on class trips. If the kindergarten class in one school, the kindergarten class in the other, let's combine and go to the problem zone together, not that they have to go on separate days.
We're talking about nickels and dimes here, come on, guys.
Excuse me, Mr. Francholli. Mike, please, you'll get a moment to say whatever you need to say, but right now, it's not that time. Go ahead. All right. And basically, I mean, you talk about nickels and dimes, as a gentleman said, but this is where you start, you start with nickels and dimes and it builds up. The other thing, and I'm going to say this again, and many of us have had this discussion, the denominator change in the age of retirees, this thing is on the shelf, this is ready
to hit. It's on the fish trap.
This is ready to hit. Believe me, this is ready to hit. And if this happens, yeah, I know that, but I'm saying if this happens, it's going to relieve us somewhat, and I'm going to...
Well, I, excuse me for interrupting. I agree with that, that it will relieve us, but it's a time of extreme tension among staff right now, and we're all aware of it, but we have not gotten a definitive answer from this governor. We know they signed the bills into law, but supposedly the 55 denominator changing to 60 and the culmination of your last five years instead of three is going to be in the governor's proposed budget. Now, we have not gotten clarification on that, so you're talking about, we're moving up to April 1, which leaves us 90 days to June 30, and we have a significant amount of staff that have to make that decision. So, we're trying to get as much information as we can so that we can help everybody to make that decision. And I know that Mr. Zara, I would never speak for him, because he could have his hand over my mouth, but I would not speak for him, but I know that anybody that could give us any help in getting that definitive answer, we would appreciate it, because we want to help our staff, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. If I could give you an idea, what has happened for those who may not be aware is approximately a decade ago, they changed the retirement age from 60 to 55. And now there is a part, and I've actually seen, I think it's on page 53 in the governor's proposed budget, all the legislation, the bills, the three bills that passed, I believe it was on Monday or Tuesday, Monday, those were all for new employees, people coming into government, state government, local government, or education in New Jersey. Those were all for new employees that are not yet working. However, the bill that's, not the bill, but the passage or the line that's in the governor's budget would change the denominator from 55 to 60, and it would change the average from your three highest years of employment to your five highest years of employment, plus there is the 1.5 percent for health contributions. So, that is in the future. However, I emailed the State Department of Education, and they told me to contact the Pension Bureau. I called the Pension Bureau, and they said they had nothing on it. I spoke to a gentleman through email, Ray Penny from the New Jersey School Boards, who said that while it is a rumor, he couldn't confirm or deny it. I was emailed an article today that in Chatham, there were a number of administrators and teachers and support staff that put in the retirement papers, and the superintendent from Chatham is quoted as having a conversation with the Commissioner of Education who confirmed that in fact this would be in effect for anybody who did not retire before August, whatever date it was. I think it was first. It was first. So, I would envision this, certainly we can, and we are here to talk about the budget, but what's happening now in our district, where those people who are, who have the years in, and perhaps we're not ready to retire, they're seriously contemplating it, I can't speak to every, for everybody, but I have to tell you that we are getting calls, people are picking up the papers for retirement, people are thinking about it because they're concerned. And if we do have retirements, that certainly will save positions. The fear, the danger, and it's a real danger, is a chaotic situation for education in New Jersey if we have a number of teachers in every school district retiring, experienced members, a number of administrators, a number of central office personnel. My question to New Jersey School Boards, when I emailed them, is if everybody has to leave by June 30, who's going to prepare and open schools for September? Who's going to be the people or the person that's going to recommend to the Board, interview, transfer, move people around, work with buildings and grounds, making sure that the buildings are ready? In our district, dealing with construction, all of these issues. So, I think the governor's office, while it's a very interesting notion, I don't think they've thought of the fallout that this will cause, particularly with some key people in administrative positions that will now have to be replaced overnight. So, that's a concern. And I think you're absolutely right, Mr. Francholli, that will certainly create a benefit as far as finances, and that news may not come till maybe May, June, whether they're going to do this or not. So, what we have to do is deal with the here and now, and those people who will be given letters for reduction in force, they will be called back certainly, but it's such a terrible thing for them and their families, and this uncertainty that exists. I know school districts that have sent a reduction in force letters to every employee. I know that there's, the whole landscape of education in New Jersey has changed within three or four days since we received those budget figures. So, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
Go ahead.
I'm ready. How many vehicles do we have in the system? How many, you know, cars, trucks?
Off the top of my head, I would say we have 18 or 19 vehicles, some are the larger buses and smaller small vehicles.
How do we repair them? We have a motor pool.
I believe we send those to repair, we don't have a motor pool.
Well, my understanding, the town has three of them, I don't know why, this is what I'm told, there are three departments that have three motor pools, and that certainly is not getting services together, but maybe we could get involved with one of their motor pools. Would that save us money?
Certainly would.
How many buses do we have on warranty at this point? Do you have any idea?
No.
Because that would of course reduce the number that have to be serviced.
No, I don't.
But I think maybe we could save money if we got together with one of those motor pools and had them do the maintenance and repair. That's the shared service. Yeah, but we don't have it. As a matter of fact, from what I'm told, and this could not, maybe it's not true, but the town itself does not share service. They have three independent motor pools, all fixing their own vehicles, which is kind of, kind of far out, really.
But we can look into that, but along the lines of Mr. Francholli, I realize a bus has got to be retired after, what is it, 11 years, 12 years? The bus that we're forced to retire, is it imperative that we either replace it this year with what, all the traveling that we can, is there a way, because, you know, it's nickels and dimes on the trips, but if we don't have to replace that particular bus, what can we save?
That bus is used to transport students to out-of-district placements. So, without having that vehicle, and if there was not a way for us to add those students to another bus that we currently have, we would be outsourcing, so we would still be spending money.
When we send a student out, who gets the revenue? Does he pay tuition to where they're going, or does the target district pay us? And where is the...
Our students who are sent out of district, we are charged tuition for.
You're charged tuition for them, and so the transportation cost is on us?
Transportation is on us, yes.
All right. We haven't got enough vehicles in the pool to eliminate one?
We don't transport all of our own students with the number of vehicles that we currently have, we have to outsource some of our transportation already. We do that through joint ventures with Essex Ed Services Commission, Sussex Ed Services Commission, and that is a bit less expensive than if we were to contract with a private provider.
How many students ride this bus each day? Is this the bus that goes to the vocational school?
I don't know exactly which bus this is, I know it's one of the smaller buses, but I don't know which, exactly which bus that it happens to.
Because from what I know is that there might be 10, 12 students on that bus, and that's it, we could use a smaller bus maybe, because I have to get a bus.
We're actually doing a lease purchase because you cannot afford to outright buy the bus, and the recommendation was to lease purchase a larger vehicle so that it would also be used for athletic events, so that we don't have to continue to rent vehicles for athletics, so we help cut down on some of that cost.
Do we have any vehicles now that are, is the size of the number which is the lease purchase?
Yes, I believe we purchased a 54-passenger bus last year.
This would be perfect.
Right, and this one needs a wheelchair, wheelchair on this.
We don't have a wheelchair lift on the one that we own?
The one that we're retiring has a wheelchair lift, so we have to replace it with one because we have that in.
So, the one that we, not the one that we replace, the other one we have does not have a wheelchair on it?
I don't believe so.
Is it our bus? Is the lease purchase that?
Yes.
Can we take the wheelchair lift off of that?
The one that you lease purchased last?
The one that we're getting, that we have to surrender because it's 12 years old.
I don't know, I have to look into that. I don't know how easy it is to take that mechanical lift off of a bus.
What's the cost of a lease purchase? To get that new bus, what's the actual cost? Do you know if...
To buy a bus?
No, no, yeah, to replace that bus, what is it going to cost us?
I don't know, the last time I purchased a 54-passenger bus without a wheelchair was about a year and a half ago, and it was about $65,000 to buy. So, the lease purchase, you do it over five years, and I have to look exactly what that line is, but I think it's about $13,000 a year.
$13,000 a year, that's right. We're halfway to a staff member, almost. Yes. Getting back to the 55-60 movement, state assembly and state, they're on recess until day, and basically, I was speaking to one of my representatives, and he said to me, quote, that this is the direction that they're going to be going. It's on the hot burner, and this is the direction that's going to be going. I agreed on one case, and then I disagreed on the other because we all know, when you lose competent, experienced staff and administration, it's tough to put everybody in it, that many, that number, the number is the thing that's going to scare us. The number of people retiring to replace it, that's the thing that'll scare us.
I understand we lease parking spaces for these buses, or rent parking spaces?
Yes, we do.
Do we have a figure approximately?
About $20,000, I believe.
All right, I have a suggestion. Now, you could say it's nickel and dime, but you know what, as Mr. Francholli said, the nickels and dimes add up. I would suggest that somebody on the administration, contact Popovich, they've got a...
If I may, we've done that already, and they will not allow our buses to be parked there because it was a security issue, because our buses are out early in the morning, and many of them come back late at night with field trips or athletic events, and they just would not allow. We also checked with the town, with the possibility of parking them in townhomes, there's just not enough room to accommodate all of us. But it's a great thought, but we did check.
Thank you, okay.
And that was about a year ago.
You have a second?
I'd like some clarification on the number of positions that we have on our reduction list, because the words that are coming back to me are we cutting 39 teachers, so I know that not to be true.
No, no.
But my question also would be then, how many of these positions would have been cut regardless of the state aid reduction?
I believe that if the state...
I know some of them we were planning on not replacing anyway, just to be a little pistol.
If the state aid was not cut, we were not replacing the 12-month vice principal in charge of guidance at the high school through retirement, we're not replacing one learning consultant at the elementary school through retirement, two secretaries, one at the high school, one in the superintendent's office through retirement, and one custodian who retired, we would not replace. Now...
That's about five of his, 39.
Right. Now, I can tell you exactly, when we're talking about classroom teachers, teachers in the classroom, I'm envisioning nine at the high school and middle school total. Then we're talking about six basic skills teachers, one gifted and talented, then we're talking about six child study team members who are not classroom teachers. We're talking about one ESL teacher, English as a second language, talking about one social worker, we're talking about five positions total for grounds, maintenance and custodian, four secretaries, and those are, and reducing, I'm sorry, two part-time custodians, and reducing the hours per clerical aides, reducing summer special ed program from 30 days to 20 days, reducing custodial overtime, reducing custodial overtime for athletics, which is a separate account. So, those are, so those are the positions, as I outlined. The first few were through retirements, which even if the governor did not cut our state aid, we were not bringing back through retirement, attrition through retirement. But the others, they were not on our list originally, but they were quickly put on our list to get where we had to be.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Any of the social workers?
Yes.
How many social workers we have as a list?
I believe we have, I believe, and these were, and we looked very carefully, these were positions that we've added in the last few years. It's very nice to add these positions, but those are the first areas we looked at, new positions, new hires, of course, but new positions that we didn't have maybe two or three years ago, and we're going to have to live without them now.
Is it the social worker, the child study team?
Yes, yes.
What did you do before we had social workers?
We had bigger caselos.
So, it's a time management problem.
Exactly, exactly.
Dr. Cassell. On child study team, the social worker was a case manager, is still a case manager, but also did all the social history on every child that came in. We used to have two for the elementary, Perry, Penny, Donald, we know they both retired, and one in the high school. We have one in the high school and one in the elementary, and one that, and somebody who is certified and serves both the areas.
Frankly, I would love to sit here and say, we're not cutting anything, and I think everybody at this table feels that way.
You know, we have a lot of courses at the high school, right, individual courses? If we were to eliminate some of them, would that save money and save jobs?
Would that save money? No, because it would actually reduce staff needs. So, what we would, what would compel us to do is reduce, say, the history department on one.
Well, we're going to do that anyway.
Yes, but if we eliminated courses, it would cause us to probably lose another position. What we're, what I'm looking at to keep the numbers reasonable is, I reviewed today the department chairman coordinating those positions, and how many classes they taught, and it varies from department to department, depending on other responsibilities, but we will revisit that and look at those people picking up, if they have one course... we will revisit that and look at those people picking up, if they have one course, picking up two, and if they have no courses, picking up three perhaps. And that's something that's going to be necessary.
Will that contractual for that?
The contractual language, if I'm quoting it correctly, is the superintendent will, as much as possible, limit the teaching load of curriculum area.
I have a question. What's the goal tonight? What are we doing? What's our goal?
Well, first off, I wanted to make sure everyone sitting around this table has as much information as they leave here for Wednesday, because they give us a limited amount of time once they give us our numbers, and more importantly, I don't want to hear anyone cry that I have no time to understand this budget, particularly since this is a very difficult budget, and this is the first time we've had to make these types of cuts. I need everyone to understand what's going on, and I wanted to give up, I wanted to make sure that the public has the opportunity to have another chance to see exactly what it consists of. So as we review it, if there's any areas of suggestion, areas that we think we can direct some focus to, to try to move some money around to save staff, that was part of the intent also.
I've been told that this budget will cost the average taxpayer two hundred dollars. Is that true?
Two hundred or less.
Yeah. And I've been told that the towns' budget will cost six hundred dollars for the average taxpayer. Is that true?
That's my understanding, but I, I don't have any for, I've heard the same issue now.
Is that the usual ratio?
I can't speak to that. I really don't know. Because I want to, I want to clarify, I want to clarify one thing. The, the impact is on households and not commercial property. We, we met with Commissioner Evans today, myself, Mrs. Yeamons, and Mr. Cooken, who's chair of the budget committee. And Karen, perhaps you could clarify if I miss anything. The reevaluation was different for households in, the homes in the, versus commercial property.
Yeah.
So the impact on commercial property will be higher than the impact on homes. So when we quote two hundred dollars, we think it's going to be a bit less, we're talking about the impact on, on the average homeowner. Correct? Am I speaking correctly?
But my question is, is it usually a three to one ratio like that? It sounds, it sounds large.
I don't know.
Have we evaluated the personnel for the cafeterias fully? As far as if there are any cuts that could be made there? If we cut, if we cut people from cafeteria and the food service has to subsidize them, is that an extra expense to us or is that...
We, we have two types of employees. We have people who are employed by the National Board of Education, and then we have people who are employed by our food service company, provider. And the agreement that we had in bringing in the food service provider was that we would, they would replace our people through matrician. As our people retire, Chartwell's would bring in their people, and then eventually it would be an all Chartwell operation. I don't know the number of years that each employee, that's employee of ours has, but the, the simple answer is that our labor costs are higher than Chartwell's labor costs. That's the simple answer. We are paying more to our people and that they are getting benefits. I believe the Chartwell people, I know they're getting less money per hour, but also I don't believe they receive benefits. Am I correct, Mr. Chairman, on that?
I don't know about benefits, but I do know that their wages are less.
I believe the Chartwell people don't get benefits, but I'm not sure because that one, if that does...
Well, but if they are, that's not our problem. If, if they have to pick up employees because we haven't got the expense of them anymore, is there any charge back to the district?
Yes. They're, they're, they have a profit and loss statement that they supply every single month, so their expenses would increase, and therefore that would change the profit and loss statement every month. But it would probably be, it could be less effective because they would be paying, the salaries would go down.
So hypothetically, if we one day had no cafeteria workers, we wouldn't, that would be a hundred percent savings to the board? Because that would certainly, as you say, that would affect the profit and loss.
Yes, but I believe they have a minimum guarantee.
But it's not because we have employees.
But what, where we would save is we currently make a contribution to the food service, and we have that budgeted for next year at about a hundred thousand.
Down from, I think it was two fifty, two sixty, a short time ago.
Right. So that's the savings we could make to the board.
So we, even though through matrician, we've been slowly, there's been more Chartwell and more food service than our employees, through matrician, the way the contract, we're still subsidizing them and we, well, I know now we're subsidizing them, we're continuing to subsidize them in the future, even with it swings over completely to Chartwell employees?
Your subsidy could be a lot less or it could be zero. Heading upon, it all depends upon the number of meals that you're serving every day. So if we increased the volume, the number of meals served, that would help to offset costs.
So that's one of those lines, something that we've talked about quite a bit. If we closed the lunches at the freshman class, we couldn't help but serve more meals.
Correct.
Because the, the price of lunch, whether they go out on Franklin Avenue or stay in the cafeteria is going to be about the same.
It's cheaper in Charlotte.
It's actually cheaper, so rather than posing any extra fees, parents or people that buy, there's no financial hardship, it's probably a savings. So if we were to do that for September one, do we have any handle on what that might save us or increase on the revenue side? Well, I think, whether we know or not, I think we should just do it, because we know it will be an increase of revenue. We know it will help stop the bleeding in the food service. I mean, that's something that we can just, we should just do with a stroke of a hand and a resolution.
I would say a accurate class number is anywhere between three twenty-five and three forty. That's what we've been graduating. So I would imagine that the freshman class, we would have at least three hundred and one.
So if we're conservatively selling, excuse me, one hundred and fifty more lunches a day, it's got to be an increase of revenue somewhere. I mean, kids bringing in their own lunch and, I'm sure it's higher than, that's a real conservative estimate.
I'm going to go back to my thing. As one of our goal sign, we're looking to look in the areas to cut money?
Looking for areas to reappropriate money.
What?
Reappropriate, I don't think we're going to get the budget any smaller, so not cutting. We're going to reappropriate whatever we can.
Well, you know, collectively on the board, you don't think there's, there's any place to cut in the budget as far as different divisions in there? Anybody have any thoughts on that?
That's what I'm sharing, certainly has an idea, but I'm taking it.
Well, we don't have, we don't have line items here, I mean, as far as what has been appropriated for each, whether it be athletics or whether it be athletics or whether it be clubs or whatever it may be right across the board, we don't have those numbers to look at.
You have, you have something in your, in your pocket, you have the detailed something.
Well, you're talking about this? You're talking about this?
Yeah. It looks like, it looks like this, and it's...
I had it.
Yeah, I handed it out the other night.
Is everyone making a copy of that?
Well, it's the only way you're going to be able to look at it.
Fund the recess now.
Now, that's the revenue side, it's letter E.
I'll find it.
If I find their recess, I'll make a copy and I'll do it.
Says no sense taking a recess.
Thank you, Ian.
Are we in recess there, Mr. President? Taking a motion to recess for five minutes?
We don't need to, but if...
We don't?
No, Ian's going to make the copies, we're not going to use them.
Right.
What's the consensus of the board on the closing of lunches in the freshman class?
Well, that's one, as you know, we're on the budget committee together. That's one of the things we've been discussing, as well as adding the hot lunch, cold lunch option to the kindergarten extended day students. That's another discussion that we've been having. I don't know what's coming back.
That's extremely difficult to do.
Why is that?
Well, first of all, the kindergarten students that, for example, come in the morning, you mean, and stay into the afternoon, those students, we would have to put on one aide more in each building because of the ratio to stay with those students and have somebody go get the lunch, bring the lunch back. There's no place for the lunch to be heated up if a child wants something heated up. You can't use the microwave. They come hot in that container, but sometimes they want something more. Also, we are under the laws of dyphus, so for example, if your child got a hamburger, say that hamburger lunch, you know, whatever, and that child decided, I'm only going to take one bite out of this and eat my little potato fries, that has to be packed up and sent home.
Because children do bring their lunches upstate in the extended day program now, so either their lunch is monitored, what they're eating from home.
Yes, yes. And, and if they don't finish it, it has to go, it has to be packed up and returned to the parent because they have to see exactly what they eat.
But it's being packed up now with what they bring from home. So it would just be a matter of packing up a hamburger rather than a sandwich from home.
Yeah, but the problem is that you have to now put on another aide, which is an expense to the extended day program, and we really don't have that many morning AMs. We have Washington and Lincoln for an AM. The rest of them are in the afternoon. Their AMs are, I mean, their, their whatever is in the afternoon. So we have kindergarten children that are, are going into the AM, they're not eating lunch in school. Do you know what I'm saying? I'm sorry. No, no, the AM, they're eating lunch in school, or anybody that's in kindergarten that's staying into the extended day in the afternoon, they're eating lunch in. But if they're going into the PM, some of them, well, they come from home and they're not eating lunch in school. Mrs. Servazio figured it out, and I, I know she spoke to me and she did give some information to Mrs. Yeamons, that it would not be profitable to Chartwell's. If the idea is to raise money, it's not going to raise that much money because it's going to be offset by the people that have to be hired.
What I'm not getting is why we would need to have to hire another aide for them.
Because if you have an aide that's in the classroom with those children, the teacher comes on at twelve-thirty, because the teacher has to eat lunch. They have to finish up what they're doing and eat lunch and come in at twelve-thirty. You have one aide, so you can't leave one aide. Who's going to go get the lunch? And you can't do it with the school aides. Number one, you can't use those services of, of what we pay a school aide to, to pay for extended day, so we have to put another aide on. So you're talking about anywhere from five to seven aides. It's not really that much profitable. I, I would suggest that you speak to Mrs. Servazio because she did a big spreadsheet on it. I know she'd be happy to show you.
I just, I'm not getting the five to seven aides if you said we have three morning extended day classrooms, one in Washington, two in, two in one.
We have Lincoln, and we have the other three schools where the children are in AM kindergarten and they're going to PM. So even though the children that are in the Lincoln and Washington school are going into, they're, they're there for extended care in the morning, we don't have that in the other three schools. So they're a bigger group.
So we would need an aide to carry the lunches from the kitchen to the classroom?
And then you...
We couldn't find a, a control to do that? Is there a risk here?
No, we cannot let children touch lunches.
Okay, thank you.
But, no, Debbie, because...
By the way, I have a question. I thought we were talking about the high school freshman. Where are we, where are we at?
This is another portion of the cafeteria program we're discussing in the budget committee.
It's not really that easy.
All right, so let's, let's, let's walk away from that for a moment, because we can do our research and get a more firm explanation of how that may be implemented or may not be implemented. But the high school freshman program, closing the lunches in freshman program, what is the, I'd like to know everyone's opinion on that, because if it's affirmative, we'd like to move forward as soon as possible.
If I may, if we're going to make a decision regarding the freshman having a closed lunch, that's something we should do sooner rather than later. And as far as Mrs. Russo, that's something we can do with very short amount of time. We can figure that out for September, a very short amount of time, but my concern is scheduling the high school with those students. While they're still going to have a lunch on their schedule, the principal is going to have to make arrangements for supervision of that cafeteria, he's going to have to make arrangements for how those children are attended, how we make sure the people that are supposed to be staying and eating are staying and eating.
I think we should do it on an experimental basis, see how it works for a year. If it doesn't work well, don't do it again. If it works well, continue. That's the only way to find out if it's going to work. Even all the suppositions in the world really will tell us how well it's going to work.
I have no problem with it. I actually suggested a year ago that we close lunches for ninth and fifth grade. The kids are, the children are used to being in eighth, seventh, and eighth grade, and keep it as an upperclassman privilege, so I have no problem with closing ninth grade lunches.
They're freshmen ninth grade and now they move on to sophomore year. They don't have to worry about the closed lunch, they have the privilege to go out and sophomore. No, it turns out to be profitable next year. We'll go up if we can handle it well. But the key in, in working the high school, I know what Mr. Zawar's thinking about the control of the cafeteria. If some freshmen leave, unauthorized to leave, these are going to be the intangibles for Mr. Kachman and his staff to put it together. That's, that's the key.
Can I, can I suggest something? Since we're talking about the budget, we do this, and we get projected numbers, and will it impact what we're talking about tonight? Is it going to have any impact? Because I'm under the impression we're here to discuss these figures and, and, and how to deal with this problem. So is any of what we're talking about have anything to do with this particular budget?
Absolutely it does, because if we can project additional revenue for next year, it's going to help us in our planning now. So I mean, Chartwell should be able, if we give them a pool of students that are going to eat in now, because it's going to be a closed lunch, they should be able to project within reasonable number additional revenue.
I guess my, my point, to be a little bit more direct, is will the numbers we get save a job?
I, I think what they will do is reduce the expenditures on the cafeteria, so that's money that can be reallocated for something else, but I would hesitate to make any projection. I have no idea what the value of each meal is and how that will multiply and what the final number would be. I think that's something that we would have to get from Chartwell.
I think we can get that number quite, I mean, if we're going to be conservative and say, we're going to sell, we're going to sell one hundred and fifty more lunches a day, every full day of school, and that's a very conservative number, we can get some sort of hard number and see what we're talking about. Is it a job? Is it two jobs? Is it an A's? Whatever it may be. They should be able to get that for us, but then, you know, that, that should be someone sitting down at a computer giving us that number. I don't think that it's going to take any great amount of time for them to get back with someone. So that's just one area. We talked about saving money in cafeteria. Where else now that you have your line items in front of you, is there any other area? Anyone may have questions or suggestions or...
I would assume that all these numbers have been whittled down already, true.
If you look at the oh-eight, oh-nine expenditures and then the non-ten appropriations and the projections for ten-eleven, you'll see that they are very close or greatly reduced.
But I'm going to ask you again, are we still looking to strike a number here?
The numbers are up already.
So we're not, wait a minute. So we're, we're not, so if you're looking to say you're going to try to reallocate, is that what you're doing, like a shift in some way? I don't know what the goal is.
The goal is if we can find something here that we can cut, frees up money to perhaps... The goal is if we can find something here that we can cut, frees up money to perhaps reduce the amount of staff that needs to be cut.
Well, I, I think the staff...
I think that would have been better left for the, for the budget committee to do prior to the...
No, you know why? I don't agree with you because having gone through a number of these budgets, I don't want to hear the song and dance that, "How can I vote on something I just saw for the first time?"
Okay, I agree. I understand.
So for the benefit of nine people. This is why we're...
The reason I'm saying that is because if you're going to strike into personnel issues, you can't discuss them here.
No, we're not going to talk about personnel issues. We're going to talk about items. But you know what? We may, I got news for you. We may be at the point where nothing else is going to be cut or re-appropriated or changed. And if that is the case, and I don't know if it is, but if that is the case, at least nobody can say, "How can I vote on this I just saw tonight?"
Well, I just want to know what everybody's view is or what their feel is. Are we looking to cut money or not cut the money? What are we looking to do? Because it'll save time.
Basically, I was under the impression before you got here, and I spoke to the staff here, Mr. Zara colleague, that I thought that's what we were going to do. But upon the next explanation from Mrs. Yaman's here, they have trimmed...
What?
They have trimmed down or focused down using the two 10, two 11 figures. They are already in place. But I thought that, you know, maybe we could have helped them with something. But they done it through their staffs, their supervisors, their principals, and this is what it is. If you can see something here that you would like, maybe you can, in your opinion. Yes, and the budget committee's been through, so I want everybody on board the opportunity and we may, more or less, in the budget meeting.
Now, we, we, from the last I saw, Mr. President, if I may, we pay about $7,000. You know what? I want to go into close for a minute, okay, on this particular subject.
We can go right into teachers' cafeteria meeting.
Can I comment before we go? I see legal services here. We're talking $170,000. That's a lot of dough. Is there any way to chop that down? Do we really need all that legal money?
Do you have any idea how much we spent this year?
Well, yeah, too much.
A, a majority of it. Majority of this construction related.
And it's not going to get any lighter.
Mr. President, could we just go very quickly?
Motion, you go on close. Hold on, hold on. Second?
Second.
Hold favor.
Fine.
You're on that. Do we need our paper?
No, no, it should be quick. Motion made.
Second?
Second.
Hold favor. Back in session. Purpose of what we did, we closed, we went through a list of certain services that are offered to the board each year, and we found a few thousand dollars that we can save. And we also put forth a plan moving forward to reduce the fee for certain services that this board has to hire each and every year, and that will be publicized very soon in the form of changing our RFPs. At our next public meeting, we will be able to be more specific with what that is. But we weren't able to find a few thousand dollars in an area that wasn't considered before. Does anyone else on the board have any questions, comments before we step to the public? Yes?
I just want to make a comment. I've received this before. I believe it came from the audience regarding a Moncler teachers, that they agreed to freeze their salary and cut, I think it would save the district 900. It would directly save $900,000 worth of jobs so they wouldn't lay off. Well, they turned around and they laid off 85 teachers. They took the deal and they laid off 85 teachers. So there goes about deals.
Out of the table.
The Board of Education agreed to not lay off the staff if they took the freeze, which resulted in 900,000. They took the deal and then they off 85 teachers. Monday night, oh, was it Monday night?
Last night, I think it was.
Uh, let's, we'll, we'll shelf this one now.
Anyone else? But this portion of the meeting, we have the hearing, citizens on the budget item only. That's the only thing on our agenda. Everybody asked if everybody would like. I don't want to stay here till 11 o'clock, so I am proposing this 20-minute rule for the entire portion of this meeting. So the first person...
How long are we proposing?
20 minutes.
Thomas, you have a question?
I don't have enough time for me to make sure my question's understandable for you.
Yes, sir.
Michael, this is on Main Beach Street. I was always taught that if you're going to complain about something, I always bring a solution to the table along with the complaints. I have a solution. Twenty-three headcounts, from what I understand, directly impact the teachers. Nine, the classroom teachers, the other were basic skills, et cetera, et cetera. But twenty-three of them directly impact the teachers. When you look at salaries of those 23, plus the benefits that they get, it's 1.3 million dollars. So those 23 individuals that directly impact the children, we're saving 1.3 million dollars by getting rid of them. My proposal is, here's 1.3 million dollars, but use that money to put the teachers back into the classrooms. Hundred thousand dollars first of all cafeteria workers. The numbers are, these are the numbers. What is costing the district was $140,000 last year, 125 this year, 100,000 next year. The 11 cafeteria workers average $19 per hour, and their benefits come out to roughly $14 per hour. We are paying cafeteria workers $33 an hour to make our children's lunches. When Chartwell's was here back in August, I asked the question, "What is the going rate for a cafeteria worker?" It's roughly $9 an hour with no benefits. If you take those $33 per hour salaries and benefits, times the 30 hours that they work, it's costing the district, I believe, somewhere around $350,000. And you've got to subtract the amount of money that Chartwell's would be paying them, let's just say it's $10 per hour. It's at least $100,000 that we save, at least $100,000. That's being conservative. So there's 100 of the 1.3 that I'm proposing. The other $100,000 comes from the top 20 administrators in the district. Ask them to give up four, $5,000. Make it 25 individuals times four. But bottom line is give $100,000 of the administrators. This is the way it works in the corporate world. You have to give back. Now we're up to $200,000. We need 1.3. The other $1,063,000 is going to come from the teachers union. Moncler, however you want to look at that, Moncler got $900,000 back from the teachers union. We can get roughly $1.1 million from the teachers union. Put it in writing that if they give it to you or to us, we'll use it directly. Put it in writing. No, don't use Moncler as an example.
It's the only example I have.
I'm, I'm saying just take that negative and turn it into a positive. So you take the $1.1 million from the teachers' union, $100,000 from the administrators, $100,000 by getting the cafeteria workers. It's 1.3 million dollars that we save. Use that money to hire back those 23 teachers, basic skill teachers, classroom teachers, whatever. I would be very happy with a tax increase next year if I knew that this was a team effort and that everybody was giving back and that we weren't losing that many teachers. I, I would like to hear what Mr. Stoffers has to say. The head of the teachers' union is here right now. Why was Moncler, why did Moncler Teachers Association, Teachers Union think that this was such an important issue that they could address it immediately? Why did Mr. Zara have, ask the teachers' union back on Monday or Tuesday to address this situation, and now we hear that the teachers' union is not going to meet until Tuesday of next week? Mr. Stoffers, I invite you right now. Here is the microphone.
Michael, no.
No, no.
No.
Please.
I'm not making a comment. I didn't think you would. I didn't think you would. Certainly, sir. I don't answer you. Okay, I don't answer you. I ask for my members.
Can we please, in all fairness, we have to give them an opportunity to meet and come back with an answer. To what you're asking, even when you ask a board member, any board member, "Well, what do you think of the teachers, X, Y, and Z of the event?", what you're asking him is to do is to negotiate in public. What you're asking him to do is represent his board and negotiate in public. It's not fair. It's not the way we do things. They'll have an opportunity to meet. They'll come back to Mr. Zara with whatever the answer may be, and we'll move forward. Because I, everybody understands what you're saying. Understand. They understand. I'm sure they understand. So we have to give them, we have to give the process a chance to work. We have the administrators are meeting next week, the unions meeting next week. We'll have answers for you next week.
And, and if I just could give a timeline, we received these state A figures. We had a wonderful budget put together. We're really, we just were going to lose a few positions through attrition that were retiring. We received the state A figures, I think it was at 4:00 on Wednesday of last week. We had a budget committee meeting at 4:00 on Thursday of last week. We find two, and we had a board meeting on Monday night. And certainly, this is uncharted territory for all of us. So I, I did meet with Mr. Stoffers and representatives on Monday just to discuss potential reductions in force. Monday afternoon, we had a board meeting Monday night regarding the budget, the rec, the total figure. And, and we've been in communication all week, and the same thing with Mr. Cligio represents the Administrators' Association. The earliest that they could schedule a meeting for both groups was on Tuesday. And so certainly, we're going to continue talking about this. And I, I share this with all our board members in the public, that we, we do have a dialogue. We are talking about this, and nobody is discounting the seriousness of this. And I certainly know, agonizing over every position. In a community like this and in a school district like this, everybody knows everybody. And that's, that's one of our strengths. It also makes every reduction, every position, every staff member more than important. It, it, they depend on us to do the right thing. Everybody in this community depends on us to do the right thing. This board depends on us to do the right thing. So we're all working together. And I'm not sure, I can't predict or promise what the outcome will be, but I do know that when I look at these positions or these names, I know that it represents somebody that has a family, or somebody that's just starting their career, or somebody who took a position here from another school district and maybe gave up tenure in, in some security and maybe even some seniority. And, and the bottom line is, all of these positions, you absolutely right, impact on children. They all impact on children. And there is no fat in the sense that every position is critical, whether it's an academic position, whether it's basic skills, whether it's for remediation, whether it's gifted and talented for those children, whether it's child study, study team members for evaluation or intervention, intervention. All of these positions, every custodian, every maintenance worker, that they're part of what we believe is our school community. When we look at a custodian and maintenance worker, there's nobody that is more important than anybody else in this district. Nobody. Everybody has a role to play. They play a significant role. And if everybody does the right thing, which they do, it makes a difference in the lives of our children, our teachers, and everyone else. I mentioned on Monday night that one of our bus drivers passed away, Jim Ryan, after an illness of about a year. And, and I'm not going to be melodramatic, and he would be very upset with me if I even mentioned his name. Very quiet, private, unassuming man. But he was more than a bus driver. He was somebody, when he drove for athletics, he knew the kids. He watched the, the teams. He drove the cruise shells down to Philadelphia year after year after year. He would do anything for anybody. And when he passed, it wasn't just a bus driver, but somebody that was important to kids in his role. So we hear everything that everybody sang out there. I've been watching the developments, News 12, 12, I watch it constantly. Fortunately, I don't have to worry about snow and sleet, school closings, but we do watch what's going on in other districts as a set, communicated with organizations. New Jersey Principal Superficial Association, Association of School Administrators, New Jersey School Boards. I, I've had articles forward to me from Mr. Stoffers through the NJDA. This is something that is, again, I don't want to be melodramatic, but it, it's cataclysmic. It's, it's really shaking the foundation of public education in New Jersey. The way we operate, the way we, the way we meet the needs of kids, the way that we deliver education. And this is one year. Next year, the cap may be reduced greatly, and the year after. And I think what's happening here is we're facing challenges, I don't want to say problems, but challenges that we've never faced before, and we're trying to work through this together. And I, I think this is the worst time for any of us to be divisive. I think we all have to solve the problem together. I always said, all of us are smarter than one of us. So we listen to you. We listen. And, and you've shared a few emails with me, and I responded. We listen. I think everybody understands the seriousness of it. And I think, also I have to say, while there are trends, every school district is, is, is unique, and some people are at the end of the three-year contracts, it's freezing, you're going forward for a year. There's a concern with contributions with the 1.5% health benefits. Where does that play? That's for people who are no longer, who do not have a contract. So there's an awful lot here. I also was on this, on the phone with our attorney, asking, and Mr. Cligio was on the phone with his, their advisor attorney regarding opening negotiations and what's involved, what's in town. These are very complex issues. And, and I know Moncler spent an awful lot of time and has worked on. So while we're under serious time constraints, we're working hard on all of this.
May I end this? And, look, this is a very emotional topic for a lot of people. But to, to blame one group of people, whether it be teachers, whether it be politicians, to, to blame one group of people is unfair. This is a problem that is occurring across the country. I remember, as you probably see the letters NJDA and get upset, I get upset when I see your corporate world, AIG, General Motors, the people who took out of your hard-earned pocket the money that you deserved as a corporate person. You deserved the raise. They took it and they ran off and they filled their back accounts. But none of us here in this business, if you will, are taking money from anybody and putting it in our back accounts. I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that the, the, the teachers of this district, all right, and I, and I'm being consistent. This is not a rah-rah, rah-rated patriotic speech. I said before, I have passion for the people in this district, for you as a parent, for all the parents. But I've been through the schools, and I see how hard they were. I learned this week that there are four or five teachers have taken Mr. Superintendent money out of their own pocket for quite some time to provide supplies for their students.
Four or five more.
That's not unusual.
This is, I'm, I'm bringing up an example, okay? So, so what I'm trying to say is this. Let's try not to, to blame one group of people. And as I said last Monday night, we've got to come together. We've got to work through this together. And I would hope that, you know, through our emotions, we kind of just calm down and we work together.
May I add, this was directed towards me, real quick, real quick.
Is this using up the whole twenty minutes?
I'm not blaming anybody. I'm simply asking the board to commit to whatever money they give back, please use it for classroom teachers. Is that fair?
I think, I think the entire goal of what we're trying to do is to replace staff.
Can we put that in writing to the teachers' union so that when they go to their meeting on Tuesday, they know that we're not going to have a Moncler situation? That they know in writing from the board, from the superintendent's office, if they give back $100,000, we will use that $100,000 for one purpose only, for teacher salaries and benefits. That's all I'm asking.
That's the goal. I think there's another goal here. Yes, Alan. And it looks like time's up.
Alan Thomas, McKinley Street here, Nutley. Mr. President, I for one, very grateful that the representatives of the Educational Association of Nutley and administrative unions are considering Mr. Zara's request. By contractual right, they could have simply laughed and left the room. I'm genuinely not grateful that they're considering it. I appreciate that very much. But if you'll excuse, Mr. President, I am going to disagree with Mr. Rogers because I am going to blame some people for this situation, although not, not strugely. But, Mr. President, you've been on the board for 12 years, and you've been seeing me come to board meetings for just about that long. And I'm sure you can recall how many times I have suggested to the board... And I'm sure you can recall how many times I have suggested to the board, the public, as well as in private conversations, that the Trenton gravy train was going to come to an end. It was only a matter of time. As soon as they stopped contributing to the pension funds on a regular basis in the mid-'90s, that was the signal, the gravy train was going to come to an end. Okay, and this district, as well as, I'm sure, 99% of the rest of the districts in this state, had done absolutely zero or near zero to prepare themselves for this day. So, in a sense, we only have ourselves to blame. But I know the board is working hard, and I appreciate that. I know Mr. Zarrah, and his staff are working hard to try and do something. And I appreciate that, what everyone is doing, especially the EAM, and the administrators, and the other bargaining units. I just wish you all the best and luck in that. I hope that the meetings today, with the town, with the town finance folks quickly resolved, was obviously a very public dispute over what the projected tax increase is going to be for the school portion of the budget. I'm sorry I wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting, so I don't know about.
We can clarify that, and I want to be very specific. The tax levy on the average homeowner, am I saying that correctly? I don't want to be, the average household.
Average residential household.
The average residential household will be $200 or less. The average residential household.
Our portion, the school portion.
Yes, the school portion.
And, Mr. Thomas, I'm curious, what would you have had us done to avoid all this? I mean, how could we, you said that you saw that we weren't doing the right things. I say "we," I mean, previous cohorts, including us. What would we, what should we have done?
May I, Mr. President? What I've suggested for years, Mr. Slaughter, is that the school district, public school districts, begin to mimic, copy, and follow the experiences of both private institutions, whether they be the parochial schools or the non-parochial private schools in this state, as well as the experiences in other states, particularly California, which, as you might recall, back in the '70s sometime, they had a constitutional limit on their ability to raise property taxes. And so, they have been very much, local school districts there have been hended on state aid to run a school district, but they realize that would not be enough either. So, they began a whole other program of fundraising, private fundraising for families in the town, corporations, foundations, and so on and so forth.
But we couldn't do that as a board here. That's a state function. Proposition 13 was a state function.
But these, these school districts are doing it. The local school districts in California are doing it, and they're doing it in other places as well. And like I said, there are private schools here in New Jersey that have been doing it for years too. It's a matter of a long-term commitment to building not only alumni base.
Oh, I've said that all along. I agree with you on that, but not easily done.
No, that's why I say long-term. That's why we needed to start 15 or 20 years ago. Because it takes a long time just to set up the apparatus to keep track of alumni, which I might add is a lot easier now thanks to the internet. These are the things that could have been done, and the writing was on the wall so long ago. And not that I'm so prescient or smart or wise, because I'm certainly not, okay? But this was something that some of us have seen, and I didn't think of this. This was all written up back when Governor Whitman first stopped making the contributions to the pension fund. All this stuff was talked about, it was in the papers, all you have to do is read the papers, and a lot of this stuff was discussed, and, like I said, no one did anything, very few people did anything. Thing is, now, you're still in highly April, it'll take 10 to 15 to 20 years to build up, you know, you know, a good development program, okay? And that means, a good development program means hiring professional development managers. And that means a big investment upfront to do that. But if you don't do it, you don't sustain it, you don't keep it up in the good years as well as the bad years, then it can quickly fall apart.
I just want to say two things, and I think I'm accurate. During the last 15 years, the teachers' union contributed $6 billion to the pension fund. I believe state employees only about $1 billion.
Yeah.
So, and my second comment is, I don't know why teachers in New Jersey are being vilified. Not by anybody in this room, but by, by all of the comments from the president administration in Trenton. They're being vilified and made to be the cause of all these problems, and.
Well, you know, Joe, I gotta weigh in on that, because you're right. And it's not only the teachers, we're coming from the governor's office, it's police, it's fire, civil service in general. And like you said, they put X dollars in. If the teachers' union put in, what did you say, six?
Six billion, I believe.
Well, the police and fire must have put in three times that amount, because our pension contribution, I think, is 8.9%, as far as that's concerned. And, you know, it's tough. It is a tough situation all around. You make a val, everybody makes a valid point to it. But nobody talked about the settlement, the contract. Now, taking myself as an example, and I'm excluded from any negotiation, of being part of the negotiation, to be able to ask questions, to be able to be part of the crafting of the contract on any, on any level of the school, right? Mr. Cook, there's our number guy, you know, Jimmy's not here, but I've talked to him, you know, about it before, and I mentioned it on Monday, I just wanted to say, in going to him as like Andrew, myself, Kenny, Walt, and whoever else, Maria, I don't know, a deputy, oops, reason for it. And crafted a contract that was told, it was a very proven contract. It was givebacks on the health, as far as raising it adoptions, which equated to X number of dollars, and the percentage was lessened to where it wasn't 12%, it was less, exactly. And like I said then, once again, I'm taking, you want to consider what you're telling us on how you're building this, is it a proven budget, a proven contract? Is it meeting the needs across the board? And I think, you know, and I have to agree that it was, as far as that's concerned. So, the point is, we want to turn around, and we want, like the superintendent said, we want to take it out on the only game in town. Teachers, fire, police, sanitation, civil service workers. I mean, I'm on a box as far as that's concerned, because I've always said it, and this is nothing new. I've never professed to be an educator from the first day I got elected to this position. Never. Don't tell them their job. You have to know what they do, just like you do other services. I think against the corporate sector, I'm in the corporate sector now. My company, they got hefty bonuses this year, so they must be really doing well. But, you know, they do the function that is necessary, it's loss leader. We don't make a profit. The profit is in the children, the profit is in safe streets, the profit's in fire prevention, and all those things, and it's the same old song. But to save the positions, I think we said that tonight when we came here, to save those positions on what we can do internally would be one thing. Because if it doesn't go that way, we're still looking to save those positions. I mean, the best, best we can, and it is down. I mean, if we look at things that we ran a little break there on personnel issues, on different things, there's things that we can do and things that we can't do. But we're still looking at, I mean, what do we have until the 31st to jockey this stuff around, or? And I'm not that really, it's not my big area, it's boring to have me, that was Jeeves and the guys that were on that committee. But if we continue to fall below our cap, like they've done for so many years back when I was on the board, very early on, and the board back then came out with zero percentages, right? And what it did was it hurt us in the long run because we were unable to do any other additional into the school district. We look at the infrastructure, how much we've gone through with that. People want to talk about maintenance plans that were done years ago. Well, you know what? I was part of years ago, and I don't remember any maintenance plans prior to becoming on the board. There was no maintenance, but it's very, very minor. Because when Radcliffe's boilers broke, they took it out of surplus. So, there was no maintenance operational money ever put aside. So, I don't know who's coming up with that idea, and that's why the schools were in the shape they were in. They were good, because what did we always hear? Hey, look at the schools, the schools are great, they look like gas, but the infrastructure was falling apart. And that's what paying that now. So, we're doing that, if we're doing that, I don't want to really start giving the staff members, staff, non-staff, district employees, to start leaving the district. Because we're not, we're not doing what we have to do. That's just a, just a comment.
This is not a debate.
No, I wasn't going to be on another debate.
Let me say this. We have a governor that has come right out and said that his goal is to pick boards of education against teachers' unions. That's his quote, all right? To me, I'm not going to play that game personally. And I don't think anybody should play that game, because that's called divide and conquer. He doesn't, in my opinion, he doesn't care what the bottom line is, as long as he's saving money and saving face on his state budget. You want to take the most precious commodity we have, which is our youth, our children, and you want to play games with their future, not you, but he wants to play games with our future by being proud to pit boards of education against union members. Okay, when he still sits and lets the lottery system in the state be a joke. We have a lottery commission. We need 10 people in a room the size of a classroom, and we could generate millions of dollars a day for education. So, I don't believe he's sincere. I don't believe he knows what he's talking about, because if he did, he wouldn't be pitting boards of education against unions. And I don't think that's going to happen in Nutley. I think we're going to continue to have an amicable relationship. And as I said before, let's just hope everybody comes and is very reasonable, including the public, about what's, where we are and where we need to go. And maybe we've done a poor job of explaining some of the things that Ben's mentioned. Some of the reasons why your tax dollars are the way they are are because of the referendum funds. That goes into it. And I'd like to add, some of the reasons why they're so high is because for half the price of what we're paying for referendums, we could have had twice, every elementary school could look like this building. But because politicians got involved, and politics got involved, we're paying twice as much in other for half the improvements. And now, here we go again with a politician that's no background in education, playing a game called divide and conquer. Who loses? Kids lose. Boards come and go. Boards of education, administrators come and go, all the time. Children are still going to need to be educated, and you're still going to have to make the teaching profession a desirable profession to attract people in, because who's going to spend more time with our children than we do? Think about it. Nobody. You, teachers spend more time with your kids than parents do today. And he wanted to do it for free, or as a matter of fact, let me show up to teach today, and here's a $5 bonus for you, taxpayer, because I decided to show and play today. And that's what, that's what they're trying to foster from Trenton, and it's sick, and it's not good. And people have to understand, everybody's trying to be reasonable here. Mr. Frank. Andrew's been waiting, you're very patient.
The key word here is fair. If the governor wanted to do this, I would agree, if he had a problem in Trenton with the money, would do it a third this year, a third next year, and a third thereafter. Maybe we could weather this storm much easier. As far as private parochial schools, when they need money, I went to a parochial school, they jumped the tuition up. They get their money right on the dime. One of the things that you should go to the governor and start complaining about is your Abbott district. Go to the Abbott districts around here. I was at an athletic event last night, and I sat with the supervisor in the city of Newark. I said, how many teams are you going to be losing through all this? None. How many teachers? None. Well, what's going on? Oh, we only have a $7 million drop in our budget. It's not fair. That's what I'm trying to bring out, that we here in Nutley have to weather this storm, and it's not fair. Our teachers here are wonderful. They are also, and I said this the other night, taxpayers. So, they're going to get hit with a double man, okay? And last but not least, maybe the governor should look back to the $400,000 tax that he implemented a few years. He's not implementing that this year. If he did that, there would have been billions of dollars that was needed, and everybody would have been in the same boat. And then say to us, look, we're going to come down the line and start doing this, and we would be prepared. But to say we weren't prepared, because nobody was prepared for this. Big business isn't prepared when the ceiling comes down. It's not fair.
You're closing arguments now?
Well, Mr. President, I don't always agree with the new governor's methods, that's for sure. But the medicine he's dishing out is something that's long overdue, quite frankly. And you, Mr. Moskowitz is not here anymore, but I'd be glad to explain to him why many citizens are upset about the teachers' contract and administrator contracts across the state. And that is because they call for raises when, for the second year now, most people are not getting raises. In fact, most people are either losing their jobs already or having their salaries cut, okay? And while we're not talking about gargantuan amounts of money per teacher or per administrator, nevertheless, any raise of all is what's upsetting people, okay? And I can't state it any more later than that. It's not that people are anti-teachers, it's anti-rises. Quite frankly, the responsibility for that lies with the boards of education, and the town councils, and commissions, and so on across the state of New Jersey. One of, you know, Mr. Cook is not here, but he'd be glad to verify that, when he said, well, Alan, you know, you know, ours is just, our increases are just a little less than what the average is in the county. And it's even less so once you consider the change in the health plan. And I just look at him, I don't care, okay? There hasn't been any increase in the contract, okay? People are losing their jobs, people are having their pay cut. In every other sector of the economy, there'd be interceptions here and there. And it's a very emotional response, but, you know, it's a very real response too. I thought that I think that teachers shouldn't be handsomely paid. I remember very well the great educational forms of, what was it, Mr. Zarrah?
Tom Haines?
Yeah, it was Tom Haines, where we set a minimum teacher salary of $14,000, and people were disturbed.
How could you pay a teacher $14,000? That's ridiculous.
And I'm like, what are you talking about then? It's just, there's a title place for it, and it's called financial management. And when you're giving out big raises, when you can see cuts along the horizon, it just smacks of, you know, bad decision. I know you will do your best and all of that, but, you know. And.
We're doing a national environment, it's just. Let me interrupt you for a minute. No, I'm not, thank you. You were doing very well until you said, big raises and bad decisions. We did not deal with big raises or bad decisions.
Well, in this department, any raise is a big raise.
Well, then say any raise, don't say big, okay? There are districts all over the state where teachers are not getting raises, where more people are being laid off, and it's a divide and conquer mentality.
Which I disagree, I certainly disagree with that, Mr. President, I certainly do. But, you know, the governor has a different craw with the NJEA that, quite frankly, I'm not interested in. I'm more interested in the education of his students. And why he thinks that's the way to do it is a mystery to me. But nevertheless, the financial remedy that he has recommended to the legislature is one that would had to have been recommended regardless of who was governing.
I disagree with his advice.
Mr. President, can you say just one thing?
Absolutely.
I, for one, and I think most of the people here listen to the news or read the newspaper, whatever, I have difficulty in listening to people discuss teachers' raises. When the stimulus money that went to AIG and places like that, they got million-dollar bonuses. People are taking six-figure bonuses home. And I have issue with the federal government because I pay federal taxes. So, I think if you look at what's out there in the nation, maybe people are losing their jobs, but there are people like teachers that are losing their jobs, and I don't think their raise is anywhere near what our federal money would give back to big bonuses. That's the private sector that I know. Thank you for letting me say that.
Well, since we're talking philosophy, when you pay local taxes, at least you get something for your money. You get the garbage picked up, you get saved. You get the garbage picked up, you get safe streets, you get education for your kids. When you send that $20,000 or $30,000 to the federal government, you get bombs and destruction. 52% of the budget is military, and nobody seems to be complaining about that with the same vehemence as they are about this. It's very perplexing.
Well, quite frankly, a lot of people are complaining about, the teachers' raise are also complaining about.
You're done. You're done here from the public. Closing someone in the chair?
Yeah, and one more thing to try to balance this out. The governor is a lawyer, who is Attorney General, has not touched one judge's salary, has not asked one judge to give up their benefits, has not one iota mentioned in any of his budget messages that he would touch a judiciary branch of government. In fact, as Mr. Fran Nicola said, he has given tax breaks to those making $400,000 or more, at my expense, as a middle-class American, at their expenses, at your expense. And I guess what, you know, causes the blood to boil is, you know what? We've got to be fair, as Mr. Fran Nicola said. When we speak about these issues, let's not point fingers at one group of people, but you know what? I think, Dr. Casal, you nailed it. It's the politicians, period. They're protecting their own, and we're paying the price. It's not them sitting up there. It's not us. It's not you. It's the politicians. I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I get one minute? We'll talk to the board.
Yes.
I'm gonna get so scolded by these people.
Yes, stop pointing fingers. Stop pointing fingers at the governor, or the federal government, or whatever. It is what it is. You have, here's the bottom line, guys. As an accountant, who's now a salesman, you have 25 days to sell this budget. 25 days. I walked into this room, I told you publicly last week, I'm voting no on this budget. I was hoping that you might convince me otherwise. You showed me nothing in the last two hours. And I think I speak for most of the people in this town. I can't tell you how many people came up to me, sent me a text message, email, phone call, personally. I had a commissioner in town say to me, "Mike, thank you for saying what everybody is thinking." Stop blaming anybody. Sell this budget, because if you don't sell this budget, guys, if you don't sell it to us, we're gonna be in real tough shape, because now you're gonna have to get another $1.8 million, correct? If we don't, that's what you're asking us for, is a $1.8 million raise, correct?
Yes.
Yes. If we vote no on the budget, that's $1.8 million, unless the commissioners do something otherwise. Am I correct? That's $1.8 million you have to find? They will strike a number.
No, they will look at our budget and recommend the number that it gets cut by.
But the bottom line is, if we don't approve the budget, it's gonna get cut, so there's even more cuts.
Well, it goes to the municipal body, and they will make a recommendation of a number to be cut by. What we think the magic number is, is one tax point, which is $367,000, which will save you all $37.
The point is, you've got to sell this budget to us.
Of course.
Sell it to us. I'm always positive, I'm coming away from this meeting with the thought that you are urging us to find a way to save stamp. Fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
A comment from the board. Everybody gets out of their seat and we throw this cat away. Just kidding. Are you all done here?
Yes.
Well, it's very interesting that, from what I understand, the town is going to raise the tax levy three times what our budget will, and yet they have the right to cut our budget. That's kind of, that's perverse. I don't know what other word you use.
Unfortunately, our budget is the only one everybody agrees to vote on. The whole thing is gonna be taken out on schools.
And as usual, however the commissioner wasn't spoke with you, maybe you should have advised him to cut someone at $600 that he's gonna stick on us, or more.
Also, the agent mentioned everybody's name. Every motion to adjourn? It's all over. Have a second?
Sorry.
All in favor? Why do I? Our Monday meeting is being canceled. We lack the need. So the meeting we had scheduled for 6:00 on Monday has been canceled.